Monday, April fifteenth, and we will call this a regular city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Please stand in during the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call them.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Entertained the motion into approve today's agenda.
Second.
A motion from Harley, second from Don to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk, I'd like to again thank Wyker Brentley. Glad you're back with us as videographer. He's with the Algonquin High School broadcasting class. So appreciate when you and the fellow students come and help us out. So then also just like to remind everyone of the grand opening coming up Thursday from five to seven at the Grand State Hotel. That's the new hotel on Highway eighteen west. There will be tours, live music, drawings, and giveaways, and promises to be a grand experience, they say. So anyone else have anything they would like to share?
Nothing that Graham.
Okay, we will move then to the administrative.
Just a couple announcements. Last week, we did post an advertisement for the position of a wastewater treatment plant operator that will have a vacancy coming up here at the end of the month. It's a full-time position, so we're actively advertising for that. So first round of applications will be reviewed on April twenty-second. So encourage folks to have their applications in by then, but we will keep it open until thrilled. And then one we have to share with folks, that information will be coming out on the annual spring cleanup day. Been a little bit different this year, and that will just be on Saturday, May fourth, from eight thirty PM. Last couple of years, when we've done it on a Friday, it's been very limited in terms of its use, so we thought it made more sense to focus on Saturday and extend the Saturday hours for the annual spring cleanup day. And then the transfer station, it'll be open.
In two.
On Saturday, that day as well.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda.
Could I say one thing?
Sure. That's cool.
I just want to invite the city council and any Algonquin business representatives to join us on Thursday morning at the Teets Entrepreneurial Center, the Algonquin Area Economic Development, unless Jacob was going to talk about this. Okay, the Algonquin Area Economic Development Corporation in conjunction with Algonquin Chamber and in conjunction with the city, everyone working together and collaborating will be hosting this community and business forum. The goal being kind of share what's been going on with those organizations, the ways that they're collaborating to work on economic development projects, but then also asking some questions from you all about different things that are happening in the community and getting some information on things like housing, daycare, some workforce initiatives, how, if at all, can economic development initiatives help support those things in our community? So we'd love to have you join us. It is in the morning. It is at seven thirty. There will be breakfast places there waiting for you, and it will wrap up by nine AM. So if you'd like to join, please contact the chamber and let us know you're coming. So we have enough breakfast places for everyone, but I would encourage you to attend if you're free.
Will there be coffee?
Will there be coffee? There's always coffee. First, coffee, Brad. Yes, first the coffee.
First.
And also juice. No, water. Just water. There might be juice, yeah. But yes, any other questions about that?
No, it's fine. I'm already signed up for it.
Great, I hope you can join us, everybody.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our April first work session and our regular city council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve the department reports, as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Kathy. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nine is public hearing, and it is five fifteen, and we will open that public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
I put together a presentation for, it's just the council, it's only the republics here, but I will try to keep this brief. Just some of the highlights, factors going into our FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which runs from July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. As you notice, that was published. Kind of the key items is for our revenues for FY twenty-five. We have total revenues of twenty-five million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-six. And then for total expenses, twenty-three million, four hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars. Get into a little bit on how those revenues and expenses are broken down. The big factor this year, or one of the big factors we discussed on this at the property tax hearing, has been the rollback rate this year, with the big one being that the residential rollback rate dropping from fifty-four percent to forty-six percent. So the amount of taxable value on a residential property or the first hundred fifty thousand of commercial property, what's the taxable value for figuring the levy is less this year. So our levy rate is going up, but that's offset the decrease in taxable value. Kind of on that note, what we've seen, a lot of this is from recent property tax reforms or a series of them over the last ten years really, but we continue to see really strong growth on, especially on the commercial and the industrial side. So that top orange line, that's our assessed value, trend line from twenty sixteen through FY twenty twenty-five. And then that bottom green line, that is our taxable value. So that's the value of the assessed that we actually apply our property tax levy to. So even though, you know, we went from four hundred sixty-four million assessed to, you know, worth of five hundred million in assessed value, a pretty great jump, so that being commercial and industrial, our taxable value decreased by ten million dollars. So this just kind of shows kind of some of those items. Our industrial growth is up nearly fifteen percent in terms of assessed, but ultimately, the important tax on is less. And then this just shows the trend line of our quote-unquote general fund, regular general fund levy. This is that eight-ten cap historically. This is the fund that primarily funds day-to-day government functions, so wages, utilities, you know, basic, you know, material office supplies, equipment. And again, with even despite our growth, with the reform and how that's hit us over the recent years, the funds that we have are actually operating the city. This year are down, but you know, overall, the last, you know, five years have been rather stagnant. This shows a breakdown of how our FY twenty-five property tax levy is put together. So the FY twenty-five budget that's proposed tonight has a levy of sixteen point nine seven six four three. So that's a levy per thousand dollars of taxable value. This compares FY twenty-four, so our current fiscal year, to FY twenty-five in terms of changes. So as you see there, our total revenue is increasing by four point eight percent, or a little over two hundred thousand. But you look at that general fund levy, revenue, that's down nearly eighty-three thousand dollars. Our non-go-to-commissable levies, that is up due to kind of a reexamination and allocation of the taxi service costs, how those are allocated. Special revenue funds, that includes employee benefits, FICA, IFRS, insurance, that is up. And then our debt service levy, and the main, this year, we're peaking in terms of our twenty twenty-one A debt payments. But part of the reason why it's up a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars this year is last year, we did use a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in loss to buy down that levy. And that was after we'd seen a, you know, dramatic increase in assessed values from the previous year to try to lessen that impact, whereas this year, we're not using that loss, as instead using that, saving that for future street department shed improvements, so that's also money that we'll have to borrow for that project in twenty-five, twenty-six. And then this just shows, you know, basically the change in difference over from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. So I mentioned, we're going up about two hundred and eight thousand dollars in revenue this year, but really a lot of that's to make up to last year. We increased our revenue by less than a half a percent, it was about sixteen thousand dollars. So if you look at the two-year, or kind of the last three fiscal years, our average annual increase is, you know, two point six percent. Certainly, our wages and costs and a lot of things like that have exceeded that. So it's really finding those kind of efficiencies that we can to continue to make that work with a modest increase in our levy and property tax collections. Discuss this previously, so I won't dive much here, but this is when we did kind of scenarios to play on how will this levy impact potential property owners. This is just twenty properties that we have sampled, just to kind of demonstrate impacts, geographically spread throughout the city. Over those twenty sample properties, sixteen, we'll ultimately see a net decrease in property taxes paid to the city. Four, we'll see an increase on average, property taxes in terms of pay to the city will be going down to shut five percent on those twenty sample properties. With the last few years, we saw really aggressive assessment rates, whereas this year, they seem to flatten out a lot more, and some even saw a slight decline. There are some areas of towns and properties that did see still a decent jump. So those properties that saw that decent sized jump might still see their property taxes paid go up. We expect a majority of the residential properties will see a noticeable tax decrease, and this kind of demonstrates how that applies to a house here in Algonquin. Even though the assessed value's up with the rollback rate, you know, and down with the city levy up, we're running to see a decrease in taxes paid to the city. And this is how it'll impact commercial properties. So because the first hundred fifty thousand commercials tax up the residential rollback rate, with that being down, we'll see, you know, estimated about eleven percent compared to last year in terms of taxes paid to the city. But with that higher levy rate, high-value properties, you know, really looking at those that are, you know, once you start getting north of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, they will see a noticeable tax increase. This kind of just highlights again the slide shared previously in terms of what was known as for revenues and expenditures for the year. This breaks that down a little bit more detail. So of our nearly twenty-five million dollars in revenue, a little over ten million of that is the other financing. That is the wastewater debt. So the table, or assuming the chart, or you could table up there, that shows our revenue with that debt issuance taken out, because it's proceeds from debt, but ultimately, now obviously it's a liability too. So in terms of just kind of looking at it from an operational standpoint in a given year, makes sense to take that out. We see about thirty percent with that taken out of our revenue comes from property taxes, charges for service. That would be things like the sewer utility, the intergovernmental, that would be revenues. Those include things like the airport grants for reimbursement, the law enforcement dispatch improvement that we have at the county that they reimburse us to share on. And then other city taxes, that eight percent, that's things like little blockage sales tax, hotel motel taxes. And this is a sheet taking, kind of just reformatting from what's in the state budget sheets that will be adopted tonight. And this shows our expenses for the upcoming year by function and type. It's kind of just broad categories of, you know, public safety, two point five million. Majority of that being police department at one point five. Their next highest is public works, street department primarily in the airport. Culture and recreation, total of one point eight million. That includes library, parks, recreation, cemetery, community economic development, eight hundred and eight thousand. General government, seven hundred seventy-three thousand. And then you see the proprietary and business type, again, majority of that, the sewer, and that is for the construction of that ten point, or ten million borrowed. So happy to discuss any specific departments or details, but the city, probably just want to be a highlight.
And you heard any comment from public, written or oral?
No.
Okay. Okay. It's five twenty-six, and I will close that public hearing then, and we will move to agenda item number ten. And again, it's five twenty-six, and we will open the public hearing regarding the wastewater treatment facility improvements project.
So there's a resolution regarding this. So this is a hearing on the proposed issuance of thirty million, up to thirty million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars through the Iowa Finance Authority's state revolving loan fund in the form of sewer revenue capital loan notes. The purpose of these funds would be for new construction, improvements, repairing, and equipping of the city's wastewater treatment facility, primarily for the nutrient reduction removal updates, updating our existing facilities and to enhance biological nutrient removal, oxidation ditch treatment system, and then other related site improvements. This is, as I said, a not-to-exceed amount. The way the finance would work is as we incur construction costs, we would be reimbursed and draw down on that. So at the end of the project, we hope that amount to be less with using cash that we saved on hand, and we do have some contingency built in there. But this would be the issuance through the Iowa Finance Authority right now. We're expecting an interest rate between two point six eight and three percent. Kind of looking probably around that two point seven five, just kind of depend on where we end up getting locked in for our interest rate once our final application materials are approved.
And has there been a public response to this either?
We have never seen any comment regarding this here. It was.
Okay, it's five twenty-nine, and I will close that public hearing then. Then we'll move to agenda item number eleven, and this under new business, this is an ordinance pertaining to, the second reading of this ordinance pertaining to vehicles and traffic.
Yes, this changes chapter ten of the city code addressing two items. Is one officially designating the speed on Snap-on Drive, that's thirty-five miles per hour. And then amending our belt cart regulations. And just kind of clarifying a few things, removing the requirements for brake lights and turn signals. Brake lights, because they won't be operating during the day and have the flag. And the turn signal, equipment required is removed. It does require that the person operating the cart use hand or arm signals, or if it is equipped, using turn signals. But to kind of make it more uniform with our UTV ordinance, which allows signals or arm signals, kind of matching it up there.
Well, with that thorough description, then we'll move to wave the second reading. Second. We have a motion from Harley, second from Don to wave the second reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Don to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twelve is a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
So this is the budget, just had the public hearing on. It sets our city property tax levy at sixteen point nine seven six four three, with total property taxes collected being four million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars. Which brings us to total revenues in the budget of twenty-five million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-six, and total expenses of twenty-four.
Twenty-four million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and three dollars.
Print is small.
Yeah, the print is, it's either three or five dollars. Yeah, three.
It's why they're highlighted in the presentation.
Well, I think we've got enough discussion. And first of all, thank you for excellent presentations all throughout this budget year. And I think that's made a huge help to understand everything, especially and to look at our trimming as much as you could. We were at seven, almost eighteen before, and now we're down to sixteen. So I do appreciate all your work. I'd make a motion that we adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
I'll second.
And a motion from Rodney, second from Brad. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And yes, I'll agree with Rodney. Thank you for all your work, Jacob, my staff. Agenda item number thirteen, this is a resolution concerning the transfer of funds.
So with the adoption of the FY twenty-five budget, this is a resolution of authorize certain transfers. There's a number of transfers that are in the FY twenty-five budget, some which are final amounts to be determined. For the ones that we know, the set amount, we'll go ahead and make those up to begin fiscal year. So this resolution authorizes and directs the clerk to make the following transfers as shown there for the known amounts for FY twenty-five.
So. Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Don to transfer these funds. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen is a resolution concerning the wastewater treatment facility project.
So this is a resolution institute proceedings to take additional action on the wastewater treatment debt of not to exceed thirty million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand. So officially, what it does is section one there approves initially proceedings to take additional action to authorize a loan and dispersment agreement, consents to the terms of the loan through the state revolving loan fund program. Serves as official intent under treasury regulations to maintain public files and public records related to, and then authorizes the city clerk and our bond counsel and directs them to proceed with the preparation of the loan documents. And then we'll have finally another resolution, I think, to issue proof of those as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Brad. Any discussion on this? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. And then as Jacob stated, agenda item number fifteen is a resolution again pertaining to the project.
Yes, so at the previous council meeting, we approved the resolution awarding the wastewater treatment plant to the Woodruff Center, which is Woodruff Construction. But just to, these are bottom counsel, I'll make sure all the Ts are crossed twice and dotted, the Is. This officially awards the, or approves the construction contract with Woodruff Construction and approves the maintenance and performance bonds as well. So it's redundant compared to how we typically do these, just approving the contract once, but it's been authorized, now that's signed, we're approving the signed contract and the bonds that were provided with the bid that met the required specs.
Many legal steps.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Contract resolution.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Kathy. Any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen is a resolution pertaining to the Algonquin Municipal Airport Runway.
This resolution approves a notice to figures for the next phase of the airport runway displacement extension project. It sets a public hearing regarding the plan specifications from the contract. We have Joe Rungfeld on the line from Holden Bank, who's our airport consultant engineer. So with that, Joe, I will let you take over and provide kind of an explanation, and then let me know if there's anything you want me to show up on the screen.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so getting started here. This project is for displacing the north end of the runway by two hundred feet and extending it by two hundred and forty feet on the south end. This is all related to providing clearance over runway burning over Highway eighteen. This is the last phase of a project we've been working on for many years, which is generally moving and lighting out here at the airport. It doesn't do turnarounds, construction to allow people to get off the runway. It also with those runway heads lighting, moving and replacing the pappies and wheels.
Joe, can you explain, counsel, what those are? Pappies and wheels.
Yep. Yep, so the pappy system is actually a light system of the airport that provides a light at a vertical heading, a vertically guided handle, which nearcases roughly three degrees that tells the pilots how to stay on course to land at the airport. And then the reel system is strobe lights at the end of the runway that are there for the pilot's attention to know where the end of the runway is as they're looking down on the runway to leave.
Thank you.
And then in connection with those, we'll be doing a lot of electrical upgrades, including that vault.
Yep, correct.
And we'll also be.
And the vault.
Go ahead, Joe, sorry.
I was just going to say the vault, the nerve center for the airport. The equipment in there is, it's important to make sure that it's up to date. It's approximately thirty years old with control. And so it's part of providing all this new stuff at the airport. We will be replacing the vault and all the controls and the equipment that is in there.
And we'll also, by the end of this project, the runway, runway will be renumbered. And we'll also, by the end of this project, the runway, runway will be renumbered from 1230 to 1231, and I'll let Joe explain why.
Yep, so right now the current runway is runway 1230, and over the years, magnetic deformation happens, which means magnetic nor changes from on the map. Well, it's under all due agreement project, we all knew, the pilots knew that the runway that we need to be changed, and while doing that project, FAA recognized it as well filing that through the discussion. So in order to accomplish this and to update it to the new bearing of the runway based on the instruments in the plane, it will now be 1331, and that will be accomplished via adding of those new numbers.
And then, you know, with the delay of the FAA funding kind of our original project schedule, it was shifted back a little bit. So right now, we're looking at having a bid opening on May 16th, and then awarding that contract contingent when we have the public hearing on June 3rd. And so assuming all that goes well, and then we submit the FAA grant and officially get the funding letter, Joe, do you want to just kind of touch on the timeline for what will be going out there and when it can be finished up?
Sure. Do you want to... That is correct. So what will happen is that by the end of November, for sure, FAA has to have all the grants executed, which I'm going to estimate somewhere around August of this year, we offer the grant, and then we will execute the contract with the contractor. And after that time, we have in the bid document, the construction start date, I believe it's August 4th, it's the Monday, until that holds down the runway, August 4th of 2025, that holds down that primary runway until first time that all the agreements are done, and at that time, the runway will reopen in its new configuration, new lighting, and new designation. And I would estimate that that runway will probably be open, open to that sometime around the end of October, the beginning of November.
And can the meetings have the grass runway, which has been used, will be open except for when they're working on that concrete portion that intersects with the grass runway?
That is correct. We now have permission and the bid documents for them to be able to do some lighting improvement and electrical in that area, and we allow them 14 calendar days, so two weeks, to be able to get in there and do that work with the runway being shut down. And that shutdown would actually impact the airport, while they're working that area that would require the airport to be focused.
So even though we're still bidding it when we make construction projects or construction or completion in calendar year 24, the, you know, bulk construction work is expected to take place in calendar year 25. I know we looked at, you know, having that soon, just a big time on a lot of that electronics and those parts that go into the vault that may need to get ordered, and then, you know, some of that initial work could take place if it worked out for the contractor, but really looking at this work being completed in calendar year 25.
Yeah, that's correct, and also to me, to get this on the record here as well, previously the light procedure was supposed to be published in the fall of 2024, and then after a lot of the uncertainty at the federal level, they did not get a comfortable movement toward the project this year. So they didn't ask you to put up the project until the procedures can be ready, and the procedure is actually supposed to be published on October 2nd of 2025. So the procedure will be published on the runway itself, thus that when you call or reopen the runway, the new approach procedures will be in place.
Anybody have any questions?
Long time to add 240 feet.
Yeah.
But, you know. That program, that's what you get.
So a resolution will approve that notice to bidders and set the public hearing for June 3rd.
Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Brad, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you for the explanations there, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Joe, run.
Are you gonna log off now?
I will, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Move to agenda item number 17, this is a resolution acknowledging a repayment of a small business revolving loan fund.
Take Health Solutions, OLC has paid out for 2019, at that time Retail Revolve Loan Fund, now called Small Business Revolving Loan Fund. They had taken out that loan to buy some new pieces of equipment, so they have paid that loan off in full, so this resolution recognizes that, and then releases the security agreement, which collides through law.
Move to the third.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thank you for repayment, we wish you continued success. Agenda item number 18, this is a change order for Central Park Improvements.
So on Central Park, there's current batting cages, and we're wanting to discuss this a little bit of work session if we have time. So we, it was missed during the bidding that there is currently not any concrete underneath there, so we are going to be building a new batting cage in Bets Park this summer, so this batting cage will go away and it will be converted back to parking. So the change order is for a total of $21,262, you know, 20,000 plus of that is the excavation, the base, the concrete work, and basically everything that's required to make that, except for the parking lot, to tie it in. There's about $1,000, that is for the removal of the batting cage. We're still trying to find, there's a home or someone we can get to, you know, do it at no cost, if it makes sense for them for equipment, so we might be able to have that one taken care of, but kind of just given the size of it, you know, wanted to have this one approved. We're just based on pricing, what we have for our current prices for all the concrete work and the excavation work, it's really just that removal of the batting cage, which is about $800 with the removal of landfill fees, like I said, which we're trying to find if we can find something else, but if not, that'll be included for a total change order of $21,262. Are they hauling the galvanized stuff to the landfill?
That's what's showing in here.
Wouldn't we maybe talk to the cook's scrap iron and scrap that?
Well, I just...
Getting a key.
I just suggested to them, maybe we could put something out in Portland, a small town might want to buy some of that and move it, you know, they don't have batting cages in the community.
So we're asking, put that in there in case we can't find another means, just so we know, but yeah, between that...
Anything avoid going to the landfill stack. Doesn't need to go there anymore. Yeah, some of you might see that and really want it.
Sure. That was Cadillac back in the day, that was the Cadillac batting cage, so you're now going to the batting cage.
The key words were "back in the day."
Did you drive down from Tyke to use it? Okay, sure.
We didn't have batting cages back then.
Beetac tough, we would not like to have one.
Well, they got a better one.
Oh.
The Hoopers and James got together and decided, there you go, better one.
There you go.
I remember spending a Saturday installing that, yeah.
Well, depending on kind of how it flows, but I'd make a motion to approve the change order and adjust it if you can find someone.
Yeah, follow his comments, yeah, certainly find any of these.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Don to approve this change order, any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 19 is to, it sets a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget amendment.
We just couldn't get enough budgets, we decided to amend our current one. This amendment, the series of changes, but kind of the high level, it results in our revenues, our net revenues going up $415,000, so kind of some, we could, we'll dive into this, we have the public hearing and send it, or at a later date, but generally, so the revenues are for interest income, the AMU transfers, there are any transfers, both of them are being recorded in this fiscal year, and that second one with the new transfer agreement that's higher than what they have historically been, the revenue that we have coming in from EMS yet, donations that we've received, and then local auction sales tax revenues being higher than budgeted, and then the expenses is really to offset the transfers that we had at the last meeting, including those, some of the CBBG housing money that's been in and out, and then same thing on the EMS side, the expenses that have been coming out as well as, we're kind of, we're getting closer to that money coming in and out finally. It's kind of pretty slow, but not yet officially done, pretty dirty at this point, it's getting, it would be taken care of by the county, but ultimately where that balance ends up being, they go there as well, so.
This sets the public hearing for May 6th at 5:00 P.M.
Move to the third. Second. Motion from Don, second from Brad, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes. Motion carried. And agenda item number 20, our final agenda item, this is the first notification that Mike Saban's term on the AMU Board of Trustees, it does expire on May 31st, 2024, and again, this is just the first reading for that. So it is 5:53, we're at the end of our published agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn this city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion, a second, the meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.